I'm always grateful for the opportunity to come up and lead this community in prayer. I am grateful to be part of this community, and I know that my congregation is very grateful to be here in downtown and invested in the community. So as we begin this meeting, let us pray. Lord God, you have created a world full of diverse people with a variety of ideas, not all of which agree with me. So I pray for those who are wrong, especially when they are me. Your wisdom is infinite, Lord God, and mine is not. You know fully and see clearly, and I know only in part and see only in a mirror dimly. I'm a man of unclean lips, living among a people of unclean lips, and yet I have been called as a leader for a small portion of the Presbyterian branch of your children. I have seen you active in them more times than I can recall, not because we are somehow greater than others, and I confess we are not, but because you are at work in this place, simply because you choose to love your people and call all of us your children. And so I pray for your children, Lord, your children who are my neighbors. I pray for my neighbors who are here in this place because they have concerns and ideas and hopes, and that they know that the leaders of their community can help them. Grant them the courage to speak up for those who have no voice, and the wisdom to listen for your word in the voice of others. I pray for my neighbors who are in this place because they have exciting and joyful reports to offer. Help their enthusiasm spread throughout this whole community, that we might join together in celebrating our successes. I pray for my neighbors who serve this community in official capacities, whose professionalism and diligence help things to run as smoothly as possible. Give them endurance and wisdom as they serve all of your children in this community. I pray for my neighbors who are here as leaders, with whom this community has entrusted the responsibility of governance. As a leader, I know too well the feeling of that yoke. Give them compassion for your children, so that they may not be satisfied with the most expedient or easiest solution, but grant them clarity, so that they might see what the better path for all might be. Give them wisdom so they might guide this community in ways that allow all those under their care to flourish in ways that please you. Grant them humility, that they might know that their answers and abilities and actions are rarely the complete solution. Help all of us, especially those in positions of authority and leadership, to admit when we are wrong and to see what is right, to take steps to move in paths of righteousness. Help us to lovingly and humbly plan for a future that is beyond any of our sight, trusting you to guide those who come after, just as you are guiding us today. For it is with your guidance that we were able to use our gifts for the common good. Regardless of the faith we profess, we are gathered in this community, a diverse and growing population. Help us to love our neighbors as ourselves, and to seek justice, to love kindness, and to walk humbly with you all the days of our life. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our March 12, 2024 regular council meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Reeves.
Here.
Vice Mayor Yao.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Ramikas.
Here.
Councilmember Russell.
Present.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Short.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Is it any changes to the agenda? If not, motion to approve.
So moved.
I would like to add an item, if it's okay with council, to discuss an item regarding a street closing request.
Yes, you may. Second. Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Mr. Ramikas, Mr. Yao, you were in. Okay.
Got him, Madam Clerk? Got it? All right. All right. Pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Reeves. I can't even speak. All right. What's the manager?
Yes, sir. On the consent agenda this evening is the Economic Development Center Emergency Roof Replacement, Uncollectible Personal Property Tax Account Write-Offs for 2018 Tax Year, Treasures Reports, and Minutes of Previous Meetings.
Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for town citizens and businesses and groups to speak or bring to our attention any town government-related issues. Please state your name and place of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. Groups are requested to have spokesperson. If you are here for a public hand, please hold your comments until later. Is there anyone who would like to speak this evening? No one? All right. Let's go to public hand. Public hand on rezoning and conditional use permit for parcel 41A2-1R1-4. Lewis.
Good evening. I'm going to go ahead and tell you, I'll be presenting the staff report for rezoning case 4521 and conditional use permit case 4522. The first request is to rezone parcel 41A14Q7 from Central Commercial C2 to General Commercial C3 to allow for the use of commercial recreation and entertainment by conditional use permit or CUP. The applicant is also requesting the CUP to permit the use on the property. The address for the potential business is 201 Southeast Street and is the former location of Brick City Grill. Proppers were provided that exclude the uses of motor vehicle and trailer sales and service, motor vehicle garage, automotive detailing, and car wash, which are usually permitted in the C3 zoning district. The use and rezoning are largely supported by the comprehensive plan. Both C2 and C3 are recommended zoning districts in the future land use map. The applicant describes the business as entertainment that includes classic retro arcade games, pinball machines, modern games, and redemption games, coupled with food, snacks, soda, and local craft beer. The patrons will pay a $15 entry fee to play all games, and there will also be a party room that can be booked on weekends for events. The use best aligns with the ordinance's definition of a commercial recreation entertainment, and this use is only permitted by CUP in the C3 zoning district. The planning commission did hold public hearings on both the rezoning and the CUP on February 20, and voted to recommend approval for both cases. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time. It may not have just been angled towards me. Sorry about that.
Any question?
Just a quick one, Mr. Mayor. Will this rezoning request be impacted by the new zoning structure that we'll implement?
So because, well, the use will still be allowed under the current draft of the new ordinance, and as we work it through, we can always make sure that it stays that way.
Okay.
Will this venue have an age restriction?
It is, I believe, for children and adults, but the applicant is also here if you have any other questions like that. But it's my understanding that it will be for all ages.
Any more? All right. Thank you. Open the floor this time for public hand. Please state your name and place of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. Would anyone like to speak?
Counsel, Mayor, how y'all doing, honey? My name is Paul Warmack. This is my wife, Amy Warmack, and we're the ones that are doing the location down at 201 Southeast Street. Did you all have any questions? I know, John, you asked about age. There isn't any restrictions.
That's the idea, is to bring everybody together, you know, all ages.
It's mostly for kids. I mean, we have a party room. We want to do birthday parties. We didn't pursue a liquor license because that's not something we want to do. I know the beer, the craft beer, light wine, that's just something to, maybe for young adults, later in the evening, but we're not a nightclub. We're not going to have DJs or bands or any of that stuff. We're old enough where we're not partyers like that or anything. We, also, we, you know, we were, during the week, I was trying to say something. During the week, we stay open until nine o'clock. On the weekends, we're looking to stay open maybe till 11 or 12. That's, with the movie theater, people wanting to, the breweries closing if they wanted to come over and have a drink or play some games. We are going to be doing tournaments, the pinball tournaments, video game tournaments. There's no gambling. There's no pool tables there or anything like that. Air hockey, ski ball, foosball, pinball machines, classic arcade games, that type of thing.
Any more questions?
And also, we also raise money for the town. We do ghost tours for tourism. We've been doing that for the last five years, and raised a lot of money for the town. I'm also, I had the nominating committee at the Brandy Station Foundation as well, so I do that.
Everyone good? Thank you.
Thank you for bringing a unique idea to Culpa.
What's that?
Thanks for bringing a unique idea to Culpa.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, definitely. Yes, we do. I'm very optimistic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Closing the public hand at this time. Approval of rezoning case number REZ-4521-2024. Lewis.
So the planning commission held a public hearing regarding the rezoning on February 20, 2024. The commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the rezoning and accept the proppers.
Can I move the R and R?
Any discussion? Go ahead.
Thank you. I have some questions. The, I get a little confused here with the area here. The proposed hours that are in the summary here don't match what I just heard from the applicant. What I see here is Wednesday, Thursday, 4:09, Friday, 4:00 to 10:00, Saturday, noon to 10:00, Sunday, 12 to 9:00, and yet I think I heard 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock. I mean, what is it?
So the conditions that were proposed with the application were Sunday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Friday and Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to midnight. And those were worked out with the applicant.
From what? Nine to what?
9:00 a.m. to midnight on Friday and Saturday.
Okay, well, on page four of the summary, the proposed hours of operation are different than what you just stated. It's like right next to the photo over the building.
Oh, I see. I think that was from an original correspondence that was sent after the work session. Staff did talk with the applicant and negotiated the condition that did allow it to be open to midnight on Fridays and Saturdays.
Okay, well, that explains it. On page five, the allowable hours of operation. Okay, match. Match what the applicant said. Just want to be clear because there's one or the other. And then at the public here for planning commission, one thing that came up was, because we're working on the current zoning, you know, this would be considered a spot zoning in the old system, but the new system still isn't in yet.
It is not, no.
Right, so, in essence, then, we still have a spot zoning condition, but the proposed zoning for that area now is going to be mixed downtown or downtown mixed use?
Is the, the current zoning is the central commercial, the proposed would be general commercial.
I understand that. That's how it is now.
Yes.
But the new zoning, though, we're still waiting for.
Is that the, sorry.
Yes, with the draft zoning ordinance overhaul, this would be proposed for downtown mixed use, which would permit this as a by right use. The current zoning right now, the classification of it is much broader in terms of the potential impact of it, and so that's what leads to the conditional use permit requirement.
All right, well, looking under the use for that particular zoning, the only entertainment venue I found was entertainment venue large, and this is not by definition in the new zoning, a large venue.
Correct. This would fall under the smaller entertainment one, which is one of the permitted uses there.
General entertainment.
Correct.
All right. All right, thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any one discussion?
I had one question for discussion.
Go ahead.
When zoning commission, or when planning commission looked at this, was there any thought about parking or how it could impact parking in downtown?
So it is in the parking exempt overlay district, so there wasn't any discussion sort of regarding the parking.
All right. Anyone else? Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Mayor Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Ramikas.
No.
No.
Councilmember Russell.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilmember Short.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Approval of conditional use permit case number CUP-4522-2024. Lewis.
At the planning commission meeting on February 20, 2024, the commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the CUP with the condition that the allowable hours of operation Sunday through Thursday for the commercial recreational entertainment facility be 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and on Friday and Saturday, the allowable hours of operation will be 9:00 a.m. to midnight.
Any discussion? Thank you. Madam Clerk?
I move the R and R.
A little too fast, excuse me. Now we can.
I think we did them together. We moved the public hearings.
Yeah.
They're together. The motions are separate.
Roll call.
Mr. Short, you seconded, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Mayor Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Ramikas.
Aye.
Councilmember Russell.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilmember Short.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Public hand on a conditional use permit for 509 Southeast Street. Lewis.
Case number 4495 is a request by Jason and Reagan Ketterer for a conditional use permit or CUP to convert an existing structure into an accessory dwelling unit located at 509 Southeast Street or parcel 41A21T11. The property is located at the corner of Southeast Street and East Chandler Street and is zoned R1. The applicant would like to convert the second story of an existing 792 square foot accessory building into a dwelling unit. The first floor will remain a garage, and the use of accessory dwelling unit is only permitted by CUP in the R2 zoning district. The ordinance contains eight specific requirements that accessory dwelling units must meet. The materials provided with the application show that all these requirements are met, and the CUP is being proposed with conditions that correspond to the ordinance requirements for accessory dwelling units. The future land use designation for this property in the comprehensive plan is low-density residential, and it is also located in the traditional neighborhood character area. The character area encourages a mixed use of housing types, but emphasizes the importance of maintaining a compatible style of architecture and spatial relationships. The comprehensive plan recommends the development of accessory units in traditional and suburban neighborhoods to provide options for extended family or rental units within neighborhoods. The planning commission held a public hearing regarding the CUP on February 20, 2024, and voted to recommend approval with the conditions. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone good? Thank you.
Thank you.
Open the floor this time for public hand. Please state your name and place of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. Would anyone like to speak? No one? Close public hand at this time. All right. Approval of conditional use permit case number CUP-4495-2023. Lewis.
The planning commission held a public hearing regarding the CUP on February 20, 2024. The commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the CUP with the proposed conditions.
I move the R and R.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm happy to see more accessory dwelling units being put in. That's awesome.
All right, thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Ramikas.
Aye.
Councilmember Russell.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilmember Short.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Public hand on conditional use permit for 891 Willis Lane. Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, rounding out the trifecta of conditional use permits this evening. This is a conditional use permit for a comprehensive sign plan for the property at 891 Willis Lane. It's the site of the old Pancho Viejas. Essentially, the request here is to retain the existing sign on the property. The sign was a non-conforming one in that it was, when it was originally constructed, it did meet town code requirements. Over time, the town code changed, and that sign became out of line with our code requirements, but was permitted to remain because it was approved when it was originally installed. That approval only remained intact so long as the business was in operation and utilizing that sign. We did have a fire at that location in February of 2022, and that business has remained closed for a period of greater than two years now, causing that sign to lose its non-conforming status. So the only way that that sign can be retained is through a comprehensive sign plan, which allows for modifications to the height limitations. The property owner does have a tenant that is moving into the property in June. Wellspring is looking to relocate their offices there, and they do wish to retain the sign for advertising of their business. In looking at this against the comprehensive plan, there are points for it and points against it, but ultimately, at the public hearing held last month by the planning commission, they did recommend approval of the conditional use permit with the conditions attached, essentially limiting this conditional use permit to, or the sign approval to the existing sign only. Happy to answer any questions the council may have on this matter.
Anyone?
Mr., I hope, well, I do appreciate the package that you and your staff put together for these really helps those of us who are fairly new to the process to understand from an objective perspective. So this sign was initially installed in the early 80s, like '83 or '84?
Correct.
So I really appreciated some of the wording here regarding that. Commercial signs to be monuments to all with materials coordinated with the primary structure. Sign and lighting should be consistent with current design standards. It just seems like this is a design that's a little out of date for that particular area. I think we only have a couple more here in town similar to that, correct?
Correct. There are some in that vicinity.
Right.
You can see in the one image, there's the Red Robin, and I believe, sign as well, which also is a non-conforming.
And a hotel maybe right behind it, or quality, or...
Correct.
So I assume the height for those was required 40 years ago because of the height of the tree scape, probably you can see it from 29 as you were rounding that corner.
Exactly. With the overpass there coming into town, coming in, the height aids in the visibility from 29.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Open the floor, open the floor this time for public hand. Please state your name and place of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. Is it anyone like to speak? No one? Close the public hand. All right. Approval of conditional use permit case number CUP-4500-2023. Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As noted previously, the planning commission did hold a public hearing on this last month and did recommend approval with the three conditions as outlined within the staff report.
Any question?
I move the R and R.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Ramikas.
Aye.
Councilmember Russell.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilmember Short.
No.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Mayor Reeves.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Ordinance amending Chapter 15 of the Town Code related to boating permits and decals. First reading had.
Good evening. Staff had presented a report and recommendation at the February Personnel and Ordinance Committee meeting, proposing changes to Town Code, Chapter 15, to make certain changes to the administrative aspects of issuing boating permits and decals. As a result of the discussion that took place at that meeting, the committee directed staff of their intent to further make modifications to the ordinance that would eliminate the issuance of boating permits and decals effective at the earliest date possible, which would preempt the need for sales in the upcoming seasonal uptick of boating permits and decals. At this time, the recommendation is that council holds the first reading and adopts ordinance 2024-001, amending Chapter 15 Parks and Recreation Areas, Article 3, Boating, by repealing Sections 15-79, 15-80, and 15-81 of the Town Code, and authorizes the mayor and clerk to execute the document. It is further recommended that council orders the second reading be waived and pass this ordinance on first reading without the necessity of waiting until the next regular meeting of the town council for action pursuant to the council's power to otherwise order under Town Code Section 2-32.
Make the motion to waive the second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Just to clarify, Councilmember Russell, you're waiving the second reading only?
Yeah.
Not the recommendation to approve?
I thought that was going to be a separate one, but I can do "and" to approve.
Yeah, all one recommendation.
Yes, all one recommendation.
You're still second?
Yes.
Councilmember Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Short?
Yeah, aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Mayor Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramikas?
Aye.
Motion carries.
9.04 Latino Festival. What's the manager? What's the manager?
Yes, sir. The, the town received a request to close essentially the same footprint as Culpeper Fiesta for a Latino festival on Sunday, May 5. After talking to the applicant and informing him that Town Code specifies that we cannot close any part of Davis Street unless, unless it's a town event, the applicant revised the request to request just closing South Commerce Street. This event was held last year behind Tractor Supply in the Culpeper Town Square Shopping Center, and the organizer indicated that that location was not large enough for the event. The applicant also mentioned that they're planning to use the town stage if approved. They also plan to use at least four food trucks plus tents and tables for vendors to set up crafts and merchandise. So based on what we have observed last year, as well as what the applicant proposes for this event, closing Commerce Street only just isn't a large enough footprint to safely hold an event of, of this nature. So because of that, we will deny the, the proposal as, I mean, excuse me, the application as proposed due to safety reasons, and the only way it can be approved at this point would be if council approved to include this as a town-sponsored or co-sponsored event, expanding the footprint to a more appropriate footprint, which would be the same footprint as like Third Thursday or the Culpeper Fiesta. The applicant has, has also indicated that they do not have a whole lot of sponsors for the event, and they have asked if, if the town would waive our fees associated with closing the street down and for the police presence that's associated with making sure the event is safe. Town Code does not allow that to be waived unless it's a town-sponsored event, and then those costs can be waived for the applicant. We have had discussions with the Dumfys. The reason we talked to them is they are one of the primary organizers of Culpeper Fiesta. We wanted to, you know, get their input as far as whether this is a, an impact to that event, or they see it as negative or positive. They actually talked to the event organizer, and they said that they did not have any concerns and that they would actually help the event organizer with the event if it was approved. We've also talked to CRI, the Director of CR, to make sure they didn't have any concerns, and they said they did not have any concerns as long as the event occurred in May and occurred on a Sunday, so as not to have minimal impact on the downtown businesses and to not conflict with their events. In the packet that I put on the dais in front of you, the back page, I listed four potential options for motions, two of which are for approving of a one-time event, and two are for approving as a reoccurring town event. Both of those, one is, includes waiving the costs, and the other one includes having the applicant pay for the cost. There's also a fifth option, which is for council to not take any action. If you do not take action, we would move forward with denying the application as currently proposed. Then we would work with the applicant to try to find a more suitable location for, for this applicant to proceed with what they would like to do. Most likely, that would be recommending Yelmado Park for a location for this applicant, since I don't think there's any other street-type locations that, that would, would meet that need. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. We also have the chief here, if you have any questions regarding safety or security of the event as proposed.
All right. Council Russell?
Yeah, so one of the options I don't see on here, or maybe it is under disapprove, I don't know, if we send it to committee, which really should be the proper way this is brought to us. And I know there's a time-sensitive nature to it, but, you know, I, I know that this board in particular strives to, to make things equally, justice equally for everyone, and this isn't something that, you know, we would do for just anyone. You know, this is, there's a process in place, and I would feel more comfortable with, with making a motion to send this to committee for us to have that initial discussion as it should happen.
Yes, that's definitely an option for council. Quite frankly, I would have, that would have been my preference to bring it to committee. The only reason why I, I ask to bring it to council is just due to the, the timing of the event and, you know, and those issues, but it's completely up to council's prerogative to, you know, push it into the more normal process, which would be to go to committee and have the discussion.
Yeah, I just don't see where the timing is the taxpayers' issue. To me, it's getting it to the right process as everyone else has to go through. So I make a motion to send it to which committee?
The March 26.
Second? You want to do a roll call or just?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, could we just, we just talked for just a moment?
Yeah, discussion. You got it.
First, can I have who made the second? I didn't. Prana?
Yeah, there's a motion to send it to committee. I second it.
Joe, now the discussion. Mr. Short.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to clarify, we'll be sending it to the March 26 Public Safety, Public Works, Planning and Community Development. Is that where we go?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And just a real quick, so this is separate from the, separate from the Culpeper Fiesta? This is a separate event?
Yes, completely separate. Culpeper Fiesta is a reoccurring town-sponsored event, so we include money as part of the budget to, to cover that, and it's, you know, just like Third Thursday and some of the other events that we do in the downtown on a routine basis.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Everybody good? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Short.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Mayor Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Ramikas.
Aye.
Councilmember Russell.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Everyone see the package and good with all the town managers and all the reports? Anyone have anything else? If not, we are adjourned.